Notice is hereby given that a meeting of the Salem City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Hall will be held on Wednesday, May 25, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing an ordinance to establish foodware and packaging. More participation in accordance with Chapter 20 and Acts of 2021 as amended by Chapter 22, Acts of 2022. The subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purpose of making recommendations to the full city council. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public in or parties with a right in or requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. There is a link that is published on the city website. The password is 144463, or by telephone 877-853-5257, which is toll-free. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the city of Salem's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or any other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communications, such as sign language, interpreter, and assisted listening device, or print material in digital format, or a reasonable modification in programs, services, policies, or activities, may contact the city of Salem ADA Coordinator at 978-619-5630 as soon as possible and no less than two business days before the meeting program or event. The Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment is meeting remotely on this day, May 25, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing the ordinance to establish foodware and packaging. The notice of this meeting was posted on May 18, 2022, at 3:33 p.m. All in attendance are all members of the committee, which include Counselor Merkel, Counselor Morella, Counselor Riccardi, Counselor Dominguez, and Counselor Cohen. Also in attendance in the committee at a whole is Council President Marcello and Counselor McLean. In attendance from the city of Salem is our-
And Counselor Merkel.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I missed Counselor Merkel. I apologize. And also is our esteemed city solicitor Beth Renard. So I think all of you folks have gotten the revised and trimmed down version of the ordinance, as everyone had a chance to take a peek at it. Okay. So rather than go line by line, there were only a few changes that were made. There were some omissions made from it. I think if you folks have in front of you, you can see the red lines. I'm not going to read it only for a matter of time for the efficiency.
Counselor, would you like me to share my screen?
Yes, go ahead. Beth, and if you want, seeing that you made some of these omissions, you can probably navigate it a little quicker than I can. So I'll let you have the floor.
Mike, do you see it now? Can you see that? Yes. Okay. So the first two sections are the purpose and declaration of findings and policy. The first comment that I made was you don't generally see whereas clauses in ordinances. You see those more in resolutions. So scrolling down the bottom of this document, I made a suggestion that we combine those if we want to leave those whereas clauses in there because they're important, that perhaps we could find the purpose finding and scope. And then you have your whereas clauses. Then you say usually when you have whereas, you have now therefore. So you add now therefore to get all the whereas, you know, whereas, no, this is terrible for the environment. Now therefore, the city council finds that the prohibition on the use of foam, polyester food in patching containers by food establishments in the sale or use of not all products, but certain polyester products by any business protects public health and safety in the environment. That was one suggestion that I made. I could just go through them and I'll scroll back up. That was one suggestion that I made. The comments that you see in purple are mine, and the ones that are in white are from Counselor Morella, I believe, and might be the council president. So these are just clarifications. They took out a few things felt were unnecessary. And then scrolling down further, deleted some of the definitions for health agent and department, which getting down about packaging material because that's no longer in the ordinance. Getting down here, when you take out definitions, you know, sometimes you find them, the word later on. So one of the things I think we need to address is in the enforcement section because you still have director in here. So we either we need to do something with that. We need to either say, you know, we need to say that this is enforced, which we have here by the health agent or the designated, but up here, we use the word director twice in A and B. So we either need to take that out and just put board of health where director is. I think that might be the best thing. So that I think that's easily remedied. And a couple of little things, I just added the word and here. And what else? Those are the only changes I made. So I thought this was a much simplified version, which is essentially prohibits restaurants from using styrofoam containers and prohibits the sale of rigid. And I just need to understand better what a rigid polyester cooler would be. Is that those thick styrofoam coolers, Counselor Morella?
Correct. Anything that is single use concerning rigid polystyrene, we're looking to ban. You know, this, again, this simplified version of this ordinance is specifically about eliminating polystyrene from our waste stream as well as just environment as well. So that's what I mean. Anything that would be single use, we are definitely trying to omit.
Okay.
Well, Beth, maybe put the single use word in there and maybe styrofoam in parentheses, so that people understand that it's not a plastic rigid cooler. I get your confusion.
You want styrofoam here?
Polystyrene. And after polystyrene, put in parentheses, styrofoam. I know it's a trademark name, but I don't think that they're gonna-
Okay. Let's spell right. Did I spell it? Styro. Yes. So down in section 14, 514, was the intent to have this be the board of health, not director?
I think at the very end, right, it shows that the board of health is the enforcing agency, the health agent or the designate.
Okay. So take it out, board. We're putting in board health. And then down here, board of health, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. So going back up. So the only thing left, I think, is the whereas clauses. We can leave it how you have it, but it just it begged whenever you have whereas clauses, it sort of begs for a now therefore. And so whereas what? Now you're going to do what? So like, just my suggestion was that just to add to merge those captions and then put a now therefore with the with the what you have here as the declaration of findings and policy. It's really not a policy. This is an ordinance law. So that's why I changed the heading, recommend the heading, but just be purpose finding and scope.
I would tend to lean towards your suggestion that to keep it uniform with the language of ordinances, that we do change that those whereas clauses. Does anybody have any objection to our solicitors' suggestion? And any, Counselor Morella?
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. I have no objections to it. I think the intent of putting it into the scope is completely acceptable. I think this is really more of a education piece, letting know anyone that's reading this ordinance, what the, you know, purpose and findings of this is. So I think that's completely acceptable. I'd be willing to hear from the entire body as well as what they think.
If anyone else from the committee or the committee of the whole has any comments or suggestions, feel free to raise your hand. Counselor Riccardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for letting me speak. And thank you for this updated draft. I do think we're getting super close. I appreciate Beth's comments about the purpose because that was the first of my two items that I wanted to ask about this evening because I've been asking for a purpose. So I appreciate that the whereas is here and I understand the whereas is are kind of like the reason, right? But then what is the purpose of the ordinance? So the reason they're both kind of one in the same, but they both, I think, are needed. So I appreciate that. Now, I guess you couldn't just translate it to a now therefore. I was going to have a similar suggestion of like combining them and just kind of making it a paragraph of foam is bad, therefore this ordinance is going to ban it. And that's essentially, you know, I think however we can get to that point, that that makes sense because we want to add a little bit more than just the this is these are the reasons why it's bad and this is what's bad about it. But then also what is this ordinance doing to help that, the purpose of it? So I appreciate that suggestion there. And I think that's a good idea to add that in.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes, thank you, Chair Prasnisky. I also agree. I really appreciate whenever there's something like this, the educational piece. I really like that, you know, there's a purpose, what the condition is that we're trying that's so detrimental, really defining that. And then what is the purpose of this ordinance that will rectify that? And I really like this section. I think that adds a lot of clarity to that. And I think that's really important. And whatever legal language Ms. Renard says that we should be using, you know, I support, whether we need a resolution where it says whereas, then we need now therefore, as Counselor Riccardi said, that that's our response to this detrimental situation that exists. So I think that really spells this out nicely and clearly. And yeah, it makes the really drives the point home on why this is necessary.
Counselor Morella?
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. I just wanted to make an edit to the last paragraph. We're looking at the spelling of polystyrene, S-T-Y, R-N-E. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Counselor Morella. Counselor Riccardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I was on my small laptop. You all can see how close I am to my screen tonight, but I was trying to read the added language from the city's listener. And it kind of lends into my second question that I had about the rigid and foam, which I appreciate the new definition of those two, because I think the measurement of how it was written before, like the 22 or .40 or something, I didn't quite understand what that meant. But the now therefore adds in that it's banning certain polystyrene. But if we read into what is prohibited, both foam and rigid are being prohibited. So I get that's kind of my second talking point that I was confused because in the previous draft, it looked like it was just foam polystyrene that was being banned. And in this draft, it looks like both. So if we do have this now therefore, then that doesn't make sense with the word certain in there because it seems to be both. But again, I just want a clarification on that because I'm a little and I'm trying to kind of reread the edits on this one now as well to see if that helps with the understanding. But the first one of prohibited use is this phone, phone food establishment to prohibit it from dispensing food or beverages to any person in disposable food containers made from foam polystyrene or rigid polystyrene. So my understanding is that's basically everything. We're banning both the styrofoam and the rigid. So the word certain wouldn't make any sense. And it would be and then that second edit that was made of single use rigid styrofoam, like rigid polystyrene is not, I don't think about a styrofoam. That's rigid styrofoam. That's more like a plastic type item that can be washed and reused. So I think adding the word styrofoam in there would be a little confusing. So kind of I'm sorry for that conglomerate of comments, but they all kind of blend together in the word of certain polystyrene products. And then the definition question of what's being banned. I wanted to kind of get clarification on that.
So I was confused as well, Counselor. So I put certain in there because it's the sale of so it seemed to me that what you were trying to do was prohibit the sale of by like Walmart of these rigid polyester products, correct?
So that's not how it reads to me, which is why I'm confused because number one says both rigid and foam. And then I guess I guess it does make sense for just retail establishments are only banning rigid? Is that-
Right.
So that that first sentence though, because it says foam by restaurants, but it's not the use of foam polystyrene, but it's not foam. It's foam and rigid.
Trying to look at it through the eyes of an establishment that just gets this new ordinance and trying to figure out. And I can see that there's a little bit of confusion. If we added the word styrofoam after the polystyrene, my take on it is regardless whether it's rigid or foam, it's still styrofoam. So if we put that word in afterwards, I think that eliminates the confusion. What do you have to say about that? Go ahead, Counselor Riccardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry when I just jumped in. But um, yeah, and I guess I'd like to open up that conversation because I'm confused on that myself. Like when you say the word styrofoam, I think of like styrofoam cups and styrofoam takeout plates. But rigid styrofoam is something different. And our first draft that we had, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the first draft that we had was not banning that. So I just want to confirm that like if we put the word styrofoam in parentheses, my mind thinks of styrofoam cups, like the foam styrofoam. But that's not what we're doing in this draft. This draft is the foam styrofoam plus the rigid, like non-recyclable styrofoam. So it's putting the parentheses in there, I think, would be a little misleading because just commonality, like common nomenclature that people use, styrofoam means foam styro- polystyrene. But this would also have the rigid ban. So I just wouldn't want to add that that confusion there that it's both the foam and the rigid that we're banning establishments from using.
Counselor Morella, you have the floor to unconfuse us.
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. So concerning rigid styrofoam, or sorry, rigid polystyrene, that would constitute like red solo cups, which I believe are not recyclable. But again, if we want to keep condensing this down, make it simple, just keep it about expanded polystyrene, which we consider styrofoam, I am totally fine with that because that's what mostly is generically used, what most of the concern is.
Anybody has any objections? I would also go with Counselor Morella's suggestion that we take out the rigid and just leave with the foam styrofoam. Counselor Cohen, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. So I think that is a reasonable edit. And I do want to remind people that styrofoam, as we know it, in every single form, is just plastic. It's plastic with air, and it's a lot of air. And the reason it's problematic is because the way it's structured, it will jam the machine. These are recyclable products. As people know, on June 11, we're going to have a styrofoam recycling day. But I do think that we need to make this as simple as possible. And things like the solo cups and other kinds of plastic that are questionable, this has been an evolution. It really depends on who the hauler is and what the technology of recycling is at the moment. So these are things that could become recyclable at some point. But as long as styrofoam, as we know it, is constructed the way it is, it cannot go into the bins at the curb. And, you know, establishments can't have recycling bins because they're going to put it in the same place. But I think we should accept this edit as is. So I would move that we accept the edit and keep it to styrofoam.
Counselor, may I ask which edit we're talking about?
Yeah, we were talking about not confusing things by including the rigid with the so taking up-
We're taking out the rigid.
Right.
So so I understand. So retail establishments would not be able to sell styro- any what I would consider a styrofoam cup, correct?
They would not be able to sell or people take anything away from the establishment that is in a styrofoam package.
So deleting the word rigid. Okay. And the definition.
Yeah. So that's my motion.
Have any opposition to? Well, there's a lot of hands up over here. Let me see if I go down the line. I believe Counselor Merkel was next. So go ahead, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. If I wasn't, I'm not sure. So I apologize if I am going before someone else. Could we do this? Could we keep both in, but list both each time with clarity that says foam polystyrene, parenthesis, styrofoam, and rigid polystyrene? So keep two clear definitions and just throughout the document, list both clearly. Like I said, the foam, because the foam polystyrene, people say, oh, yeah, styrofoam. So that and then the parenthesis styrofoam and then and also rigid polystyrene, just a thought, you know, if we could make some clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wasn't quite sure about the I wanted clarification on that motion. I don't know if there was a second to it, but my understanding of, sorry, my, I guess I wanted to go back to my original comment was the rigid styrofoam ban. I would be more comfortable with just doing the foam polystyrene at this point. And I just wanted clarification of if that was I'm trying to say it as simple as possible and not adding more confusion. So.
I don't believe that we're taking any motions. Everything's under discussion right now, Counselor Riccardi. I think when we kind of hash it all out, we'll ask for some kind of a motion to for the amendments and spell out the description of the amendments. And then and then we'll make a motion. I'm hoping that we get that all done so that we can bring it to city council tomorrow night also. Counselor Morella?
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. I would move that we strike all language that is referring to rigid polystyrene and keep this to expanded polystyrene, parentheses, styrofoam. And I think that makes it very simple, this entire document that we're just going to be focused on styrofoam.
I will withdraw my motion and second, Counselor Morella's. So there is a second now on the motion on the floor.
So we officially have a motion by Counselor Morella to change it to only expanded polystyrene, styrofoam in parentheses, and take out rigid. And seconded by Counselor Cohen. The guys are making me write shorthand over here. So let's 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 take a roll call vote on that. Counselor Riccardi?
I would just like clarification. I'm sorry. I don't quite. I understand the concept, but I just want to make sure if we could scroll down to where it's being referred because I haven't seen the edits made yet. I think Beth is doing this. So for A in section 14, 513, we're talking about removing A, yeah, in the first, so the very first section, removing or rigid polystyrene at the end there, right? Okay. And then so that would be just delete it. And then that's just a recommendation. I'm sorry, I need to go grab my glasses. Um, retail establishments are forbidden. And then again, so what, so Mike, if we remove all references to rigid, then that's basically removing C in its entirety because it's not, it doesn't reference foam at all. So are we removing just rigid, single use rigid? And then so it's just banning foam?
I think we want to keep C in to keep in the definition of coolers, cups, and plates.
Okay. So then so we keep that, but then remove the word rigid. Okay. And then my last comment on it, so they fill the floor. I'm sorry. Should we keep in the definition of rigid polystyrene just to keep clarification, I guess, as to or possible future use? I don't know if there's any kind of best practices for that to not include a definition if you're not referencing it in the ordinance. You know, I don't, I'm all about simplification. So I don't want to add any confusion to it. But that was kind of more of a, I guess, a question for Beth.
Generally, we don't put definitions in when there isn't any reference to the word.
Okay.
Counselor Marcello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not being a member of the committee, I like this edit. I this kind of is more the way it's edited now is more of what we talked about moving forward with. I didn't realize that rigid styrofoam was red solo cups. That's not not anything I want to take up now. We have not discussed that at all. Keeping this to the foams, the foam polystyrene is exactly the way we want to move forward right now on this version. And so originally, I raised my hand to bring up those three edits that you did, including the definition of rigid polystyrene. And so that should be, that should be it. And then my last question for Beth, I know this is kind of off topic, but at the end, there's two references to this takes takes effect in one year. We have 14-516 and then section two.
So section two is just the ordinance document that is on record with the city clerk where she puts down the vote at the end.
Okay.
What will be text has to be within the quote marks. So that effective date will be actually in the text of the ordinance book. You usually see that because you're mostly ordinances that you do take effect as provided by city charter. And that's what that's what section two usually says, which is after two passages and after the mayor signs it. So you usually don't see effective dates. But when the effective date isn't as prescribed by city charter, that's why that's in there.
Okay. I have one other. Well, what did you take your vote yet, Counselor Prasnisky?
It was still under discussion, so.
Okay. All right. Take your vote first, then I have another question.
So the motion again goes back to that we are going to remove the rigid plastics from this and keep it just to the expandable polystyrenes. That was a motion made by Counselor Morella, seconded by Counselor Cohen. So again, let's go to the roll call vote. So again, let's go to the roll call vote. Counsel Rikati?
Sorry, I'm just watching the city.
Go ahead, I'm just, I'm just, go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
Counsel Cohen?
Yep.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. So we are taking out the rigid plastics. Any other comments on the rest of the changes? Okay. Counsel Morcillo?
Thank you. I do have one question. And this has to do with Salem Hospital. So the only outstanding issue was whether they use any, any of the foam Styrofoam products in their hospital, and they are checking right now with their food service and patient care. And so my question for Ms. Renaud is, can this ordinance be modified during the year before it goes into effect to maybe give, give them like the ability to continue for X, X amount of time, or, do you know what I mean?
Yes, so that might be best addressed by the Board of Health Regulation.
Okay, that's fair.
So the Board of Health can make a, not an amendment, not an amendment, but give, but give special dispensation to Salem Hospital to exclude them from, from the ordinance? They have the authority to do that. Is that correct, Beth?
Yeah, if you give them the authority. So let's read this.
Okay. That would be a second motion to let the Board of Health make amendments or suggest amendments. Would that come back to us for approval? For approval?
Not, if you give them authority to make a regulation, it's not... See, the problem is usually that their regulations are consistent with ordinance and state stat, and state laws. So we might have to put something in here that says, or any regulation stands by the Board of Health. Something like, which may... Something like, which may include... What did you call them? Counsel Varela, you had an exception in the prior ordinance. Were there waivers? Yeah, which may include waivers. I forget what you called them. Was it a waiver for a particular?
I'm going to check right now.
Yeah, you had some waivers in, I thought. I think it was a one-year waiver that you offered the Board of Health could waive things for up to a year.
That's correct.
Something like this. Which may include waivers of the ordinance and ordinance for no more than one year. Or any regulation says by the Board of Health, which may include waivers of, waiver, waivers.
That would be consistent with other responsibilities of the Board of Health, similar language.
Right.
Okay. Varela?
Thank you, Chair Prasniewski. I do have the language here, Beth would like to hear it. It's very simple. Any establishment may seek an exemption from the requirements of this article by filing a request in writing with the health agent or designee. The health agent or designee may waive any specific requirement of this article for a period of not more than one year if the establishment is seeking an exemption as demonstrated that strict application of this specific requirement would cause undue hardship.
Okay.
I think you can probably send that over to Beth instead of her trying to remember to type it all. But does anybody have, does anyone have any issue with that exemption in the Board of Health? Okay.
Do you want, Counsel, do you want to include the language with respect to... Is this enough, or did you want to include the entire language that you just read about the exceptions?
My suggestion is to, to put in, as it was quoted by Counsel Varela, only because it completely explains. I don't think it leaves any, any, any issues. It very carefully explains the exemptions.
Okay, I'll add that in. I'll copy it and paste it.
Rikati?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious if the, the hospital concern was related to their cafeteria or if it was related to the, like, medications that might need to be cooled in a, in a disposable cooler? I don't know if we had any details around that, because I feel like that wouldn't be solved in a year. And I don't, I don't know. I just don't want to put them in a position.
So my understanding is that, that goes to packaging, which we're not addressing. We're not addressing how they package it. We're addressing is how they deliver the food, the food service part of it. So, yeah, I'm sure that the hospital has to package things in a cool environment and try to keep them that way. So that, that, we're, at this point, we're not addressing any packaging concerns by any establishment. And my, if I'm wrong, which I don't see anything in here, I make... Counsel Varela?
Sorry.
Your hand was up.
Sorry.
Okay, so then it'll be, Counsel, go ahead, Counsel Rikati, go ahead. You still have a thought, go ahead.
Sorry, no, I just wanted clarification on that, because the retail establishments are prohibited from selling or distributing disposable containers made from Styrofoam, Styrofoam, so cooler. So I think our mind goes to food. And much of the definition is specifically food-related retail establishment. But it just, I mean, like, I know people that sell items and chip them in Styrofoam retail establishment.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not banning the use of a foam, a Styrofoam cooler. We're just not allowing them to be sold in Salem. There's no police out there looking for use of Styrofoam coolers. And so, yeah, we're not looking to have them change what they're using in the hospital for medications, certainly. And they wouldn't buy them at, you know, the, the dollar store here either. They would buy them through their own distributors. But it's, I believe mostly we're looking for what they use in their cafeteria and for their, their, just their patient nutrition uses.
Rikati, do you have a response?
Yeah, I was hoping to just look at the retail establishment definition, because it does specifically say pharmacies. So I would be concerned if, I mean, now, I don't want, I feel like my brain just always thinks about, oh, well, now what? That, you know, if those coolers are used in pharmacies. I don't know, that's just a concern of mine that... Okay, so that's a different retail establishment definition.
Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Chair Prasniewski, not being a member of the committee. I, I had, I had the same concern that Counsel Rikati just raised. And I, I think we understand the intent, but I do think, I do think that the language about enforcement, or rather, the language around prohibited use and distribution is a little squishy. I think you could add an item C and just say very specifically, you know, for the purpose of distributing food, and that would really clear up whether we're talking about any sort of packaging being distributed or packaging specifically related to, to food.
If you have a spot to...
We can't hear you, Counselor.
I'm sorry, Counsel Varela?
Thank you, Chair Prasniewski. I just wanted to clear up, you know, that this ordinance is specifically about foodware and packaging. So it's specifically about food service ware. I mean, I think it's pretty clear in the, in that basically the first sentence, that this is an ordinance relative to sustainable foodware and packaging. So if Beth doesn't think, if we need more clarity, I'm fine with that. But I think it's pretty clear that this pertains to foodware and packaging.
Counsel Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Prasniewski. I would also be comfortable in allowing the Board of Health to have the, have the ability to make exemptions, as it says here, you know, if it would cause some kind of hardship, and not having the year limit. I think we don't have to, I think, you know, they're the health experts. They, they can, if they get, as it had said, you know, in writing, a request that this would cause some kind of hardship, if it's a hospital for patients or staff or something, that I think I would feel comfortable, like I said, if it didn't have the year limit, they just have the ability to make exceptions, because as I hear this discussion, no one can, can ever like foresee every unusual circumstance that might happen. You know, whenever we write an ordinance, it's impossible to, you know, to try to come up with every scenario that could possibly happen. And, you know, our health agent, you know, our health department, the Board of Health, can make, you know, that determination then with some flexibility. And I don't see why we would need a year restriction. I'd just be comfortable with them having the ability to be able to, to, to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth, do you have anything to comment on that part of it?
I don't, I, I don't...
Is there a way to remove the one-year restriction and just leave it up to the Board of Health to make a determination?
Absolutely.
Any objections to that, to that change? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Prasniewski. I do not want to remove the one year, because as, I would rather insert Counsel McLean's language and rely on what Counsel Varela said. This is for delivery of food. And, you know, already the industries, whether it's hospitals or whatever, are moving away from what we consider traditional Styrofoam. So I do, I do not, I will not vote to remove the year, because we need to move to a better place environmentally. And so I would rather insert Counsel McLean's language, which really makes this very specific. And I think, you know, deferring to Counsel Rikati, you know, let's be as specific as possible. So I, I'm going to move that we insert Counsel McLean's language, which was really simple and to the point.
Rikati?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second that. And just for clarification, I believe Counselor McLean's language was in section C of 14, 513, the prohibited uses. Retail establishments are prohibited from selling or distributing disposable food service containers made from foam polystyrene. So just, I think, adding that word, food service containers, makes it clear that we're just banning items for food, for food. Or by adding that word, we're just talking about, and that seems pretty clear to me that then, you know, the, all of the other options that we talked about are not included in that. So I would support that. And I will comment on the other motion that's on the floor once we clear up this one.
Okay, so Counsel Cohen's motion is still under discussion. Counsel Morcillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make one thing clear. We added item C as kind of a, it was sort of a stretch here. And it also bans Styrofoam coolers, which are not for food distribution. Therefore, taking on your boat and filling with ice and putting your beer in it, and then you're done with the day, right? Like, it's a one-use on your boat, basically. That's where we were going with item C. It also includes any foam plates or cups that happen to be sold in a store. If that's not the desire of people for this version, we can just pull out C. But I don't want to lose the fact that we're really trying to get rid of that single-use Styrofoam cooler that just gets broken and then dumped overboard or, you know, blows around in the wind. So I will sit back and listen to the discussion.
Counsel Rikati?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, that's a, that's a good point. I, I do feel like this covers it, but again, it would have to be what the retail establishment, new retail establishment definition is. I think this covers it, though, because food and beverage containers, that is selling of a foam cooler and foam cups and foam plates. So I do think that adding that in and beverage covers it. Unless anyone doesn't agree.
I, I, I see Counsel Morcillo's point, but it isn't just on boats. I mean, people bring them to the beach, those coolers. People bring them to their friends' yards when they bring, when they have a cookout, you know, and it's, it's food and beverage that's stored in it. So, and I think we can all agree that we see, we all see quite a lot of that waste of those coolers laying about our, our seashore and other places. Counsel McLean?
Thank you, thank you, Chair Prasniewski, not being a member of the committee. I don't have particularly strong feelings about the matter, one way or the other, but I will say that sort of similar to Counsel President Morcillo's comments earlier, the, the sort of, my understanding of what we were discussing in previous rounds of this conversation did not as much include general retail sales of all manner of Styrofoam containers. And so that really hasn't been the conversation that I've been having, you know, sort of with, with others and, you know, residents and businesses when I was talking about what we were working on. So to that degree, it feels a little bit, I guess, like a stretch, as was sort of said. But, I mean, I think it's worth doing. I just think it's not what I've been prepping people for about the ordinance.
And I would hate to see this continued in this, in this committee, just based on something. As, as my note is that, we keep watering it down and watering it down. But we, I'd like to get something in front of the General Counsel, and I don't want to see any questions or confusions. That's why we're, that's why we're all here, to make it simple and easy to understand and, and bring something to the, to the table tomorrow. Counsel Rikati?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on that note, I was wondering if I could ask Counsel Varela, because I know you've done a lot of research and conversations into this, if that piece has been part of your conversations that you've been having. I think it's good to have in there. I agree with, you know, it's, unfortunately, you know, people can buy them in another town and bring them into our town and sit on the beach with them or bring them into their boat. But for our own, you know, I just honestly, I don't know how many stores currently sell them or what the market is for that right now. And I don't know if any research has been done on that, I'm just curious.
Counsel Varela? Thank you, Chair Prasniewski. Yes, so there are a couple of retail establishments that still sell Styrofoam plates, cups, cutlery. Concerning the coolers, that's definitely a seasonal thing that they bring in. But I do feel for the viability of this ordinance and, you know, the environmental concerns, that keeping this section is very important for eliminating, you know, Styrofoam in general. So I feel strongly about keeping this concerning our retail establishments. It's, it's a, it's a small ask. It's a, it's a small ask, and I think it'll, it'll do a lot in the line, along, along the lines of environmental concern.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Prasnusky. I agree with Counselor Varela, and I hope this section in, for, for number C relating to coolers and cups and plates, I'm, I'm hoping to see that stay, stay in the ordinance. I think it's clear. And, and I think it's, it fits in with the ask, the overall ask of this ordinance, which we have had a lot of discussions and about, and I'm hoping to see, 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 stay in the ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Ricciardi.
Sorry, I didn't realize my hand was still up.
All right, so the general consensus, well, first of all, we have to go back to the motion that Counselor Cohen made to include Counselor McLean's language on a, on the definitions of food, of food, clarifying that. Beth, did you get all of that?
Yeah, I added beer and beverage to it.
Okay. All right.
As it suggested.
So we have, we have a motion on the floor to include that language, which I think has already been discussed. So let's just do a quick roll call vote on, on that motion. Counselor Ricciardi.
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. And seeing that there was no motion made about the removal of the coolers, cups and plates, we'll just leave that, that clause in. Are there any other changes? That anybody thinks should be made before we bring it forward tomorrow? Thank you. I agree with Counselor Merkel that I think the intent is to show that we are doing our due diligence to remove harmful materials from our, from our, from our stores and from our city. And I think that Styrofoam being the biggest problem, we take this big step in setting a base to work off of later on if we want to add straws or rigids or if we want to go, go on. Beth, are you comfortable with the way it reads now?
Yes, Counsel. I just had a question about that for no more than one year. Is that something we're leaving in or taking out? With respect to the Board of Health exemptions?
Counselor, Counselor Varela.
Thank you, Chair Prasnusky. Just to make things simple, I would like to make a motion on, for more, for no more than one year. Just to vote on that so everyone's on the same page. May I find that acceptable?
You're asking that it be kept on for no more than one year?
Correct.
Are they?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just catching up on the edits. I was gonna, I was gonna throw, throw out the idea of like a check-in annually, so no more than one year at a time or something. Because I understand not having it be in perpetu, in perpetuity, but what if the hospital has a scenario and there's, you know, yeah, I'm trying to, I guess not knowing what their concern is, is a little concerning to me. Like, will it be solved in a year? Then we're fine. If not, then I guess we'll just have to come back and edit this in a year.
And I think the Board of Health would, would, would weigh in on this.
Right, but they can only do that for a year. And then, yeah.
More than, no more than one year.
Yeah. I don't know.
Counselor Varela made a motion, well, that was in there originally. So I don't believe, I think the motion would be to take it out, not to leave it in. So I think we're just gonna, we're just gonna leave it in. And it doesn't need a motion to stay. It needs a motion to be taken out. So is there, is someone making a motion to take that out? Counselor Cohen, you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Chair Prasnusky. No, I, as I said before, I think we need to keep it in. You know, the, the environment and the climate crisis are now, you know, giving us year, you know, let's, let's think about this for a year. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the edits that the city solicitor proposed at the beginning of the meeting.
That, Counselor Cohen, is that all the edits from the beginning until now?
Yeah, the ones that Beth went over, you know, we obviously voted on one specific, a couple of specific things, but the, the, the revisions that the solicitor set. I mean, I thought we were able to, you know, before we can vote to move this back to the council, I think we need to get the language to where we want it to be. And I thought we were, you know, as Beth was explaining things, there weren't objections. So I'm going to move that we accept the revisions as the solicitor outlined in her presentation.
Second.
From Counselor Varela. So under discussion, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Prasnusky. I had actually had a comment in response to Counselor Ricciardi's comment. But if you prefer, I move along to the vote, that's fine. Anyway, my, my thought was to Counselor Ricciardi's point, I didn't know if she would feel more comfortable where it's as, since we had the request to keep the one-year limit in language to, to the effect that, and at that time, an exemption, a request for exemption is, is allowed or something to the effect that the Board of Health may revisit any additional or follow-up exception or extension or some, some kind of language that it could be revisited by the, the Board of Health in one year if, if they want to reapply for the exemption. I didn't know if that language to that effect would be helpful.
If I've seen it before, another language that things can be revisited, is that something that can be, can be added as a, as a, as a checkpoint on this?
I'm not sure what you mean. Do you mean adding my, for no more than one year at any, at at any one time or by anyone?
At which, yeah, at which point it could be revisited or something, or they could reapply, at which point they could reapply for an exemption.
For request, for?
Don't we have a motion with a second?
Right, it's not under discussion. And the motion to accept the revisions, and it appears that under discussion, we're making more revisions.
I, I don't accept the amendment to the motion. We have a motion and a second, and the, that was not in the edits that the solicitor offered at the meeting. So I think we should vote on accepting the solicitor's revisions. And then if we want to look at the language about the year, we can do that.
We're, we're back to the discussion on Counselor Cohen's motion to accept the revisions as written to this time by our city solicitor. So we have discussion on that, which Counselor Merkel is suggesting another revision, which I believe is within the scope of her authority to discuss that, because it's still under revisions. But we haven't discussed whether we want to accept Counselor Merkel's revision or not at this point. So I'm glad that Counselor Merkel had said what she said. I'd like to hear further discussion from anybody else. And I see Counselor Ricciardi has her hand up. So Counselor Ricciardi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll speak to the motion on the floor of reviewing the solicitor or approving the solicitor's edits. I would not feel comfortable voting on that because I am still trying to read and digest what those edits were because they're not what was sent out to us earlier today. In theory, yes, I 100% agree, and I don't think there was a lot of conversation or confusion. But I just would like to have clarity of what those revisions are, because they were revisions presented to us at the very beginning. And then we also added additional revisions, including that language that we were just talking about. So I appreciate the additional conversation around what we're actually voting on and what those revisions may be. Because I don't, I want to have a positive vote here, and I, we're like, so close, guys, we're super close, we're gonna get there. So I just want to feel comfortable, though, in my understanding of what we're voting on. So in, in regards to what Counselor Merkel was suggesting, I agree with that. I think, and it's saying, it's also saying up to one year, we're not, we're not insisting that the Board of Health give grants a year exception. You know, they could do six months or three months at a time, whatever they feel is reasonable. But say, you know, they, they grant three months and then they need an additional three months. Again, not knowing what these exceptions might be around, it's hard to say that a certain time is adequate. And that's what's concerning to me without knowing. I mean, if, if there are no exceptions, or, you know, they, it turns back that, that there's nothing, we can always come back and edit it, but it just seems a little too hard and fast for me if, if we don't know what it might be. And I think just adding that additional Board of Health, which may include an exemption of the provisions for no more than one year, like at a time or something, or for no more than one year and possibly, and renewed annually. Or again, we were, I feel like we were super close to that language until the other question came up. But something along those effects, I would appreciate having in. It's not a hard or fast, dire tour to me, to be honest, but I, I think that that will provide us with kind of, especially in those scenarios with the hospital that we don't know what it is. And again, it's, we're leaving it up to the Board of Health, so they will be the final say there. And then just, I guess, back to my point of what the motion is, I would appreciate, I, I know it's labor-some or boresome, but a line by line, like what we're actually voting on for the revisions, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I believe Counselor Murcello had her hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to, I want to clear up some stuff here. Beth, can you go down to the bottom of the document? Oh, sorry, when you're done typing there. Okay, all right. This purple section here with the, with the, except for the brown, the brown words, these and retail businesses, this whole section is what I sent out in the version that I gave you. I gave you the cleaned up version. I didn't realize that we were going to be starting from this version here. All of this stuff was just moved up to replace the very first item. And so now, in your document that you got from me yesterday, Section 14-510, Purpose Finding Scope, is exactly what's written here with the addition of these and retail businesses.
The last paragraph is different, yes.
Right, and, and, well, I mean, I even sent them that last paragraph, and we added now therefore to the beginning of it. I mean, that's, that is, that is what was changed. So I, I don't want to hold up this ordinance because of that. And maybe I should have sent out the, the redline version, which is really, I mean, it's just, I cleaned it up because it was hard to follow. So I want to say again, all I did was I took this section here, 14-510, Purpose Finding Scope, and put it up at the top. So what you're reading there is exactly what she's suggesting with the minor edits that we made today. So that, I, so I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Varela.
Thank you, Chair Prasnusky. I would like to take away my second, so we continue the conversation.
So noted. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Prasnusky. I will revise my motion. But before I do, I want to speak to what I believe the purpose of this ordinance and any other ordinance that involves the health of our environment is. And I mentioned this at the very first meeting, and I think it was 75 meetings ago that we started talking about polystyrene. And the problem with any of these initiatives, and there's, I think, Counselor Varela did the research, there's 41 communities or something like that that have adopted this. But if you think about your day-to-day life, going into Honeydew or Starbucks or, you know, any other establishment, they have anticipated these things. And what they've done is they've developed products to replace polystyrene and anything else that we have found, you know, offensive for the environment with things that are worse. The paper cup that we think is, you know, adequate to hold hot liquids and juices or whatever is got plastic in it. It's the only way it can maintain its integrity. And that is not recyclable, and it goes into a landfill, or in the case of Salem, it gets burned in the incinerator and affects our air. And I'm gonna make one other really big statement here. The IPCC, just last week, changed their findings that we have 10 years to make sure that we're under an increase of 1.5 degree increase. And we're at one, and we have gone from basically zero to one increase just in 50 years. And this is a thousand-year study. So I, I am not going to vote to allow any institution, hospital or anywhere else, when it's only food and beverage containers, to have any exception, whether it's the Board of Health or anyone else, more than a year. We're already saying in this ordinance that it doesn't go into effect for a year. So that would give the hospital two years. And there are already options, and Counselor Varela has talked about this, for any institution or retail shop, you know, restaurant, whatever, over time to change the way they distribute their food and beverage. So I'm just stating for the record that I will not vote to enable the Board of Health or any other entity in Salem that are appointed physicians to, to really affect changes that we're imagining that are not going to get us to the right place. And I'm gonna make one more point about this. When you look at the plastic bag bans and you look at municipal aggregation, where we were the fourth or fifth community and the first one on the North Shore, 18 communities adopted municipal aggregation six months, within six months of us doing it. And if we do this, other communities, maybe places where you can go and buy a Styrofoam, you know, cooler and bring it into Salem, it will be more difficult because other communities will follow us. So I'm going to move that we accept the language that Council President Murcello did with the word therefore added, and that we, you know, and I'm, I'm going to just say for the record, I am not going to vote to allow any entity to give some kind of arbitrary, you know, that, you know, additional notice more than the two years. And so my motion is to accept the language as Counselor Murcello defined.
Do I have a second? Second.
Second. If I may.
Thank you. Uh, under this, under discussion, go ahead, Counsel Verella.
Thank you, Chair Prozinski. Uh, you know, I, I agree with Counselor Cohen here. You know, this is about eliminating styrofoam from our waste stream, and I, I don't feel like it's really. You know, to give an exemption to an entity like a hospital or any institution thinking that they don't have enough time. At this point, if they want the year exemption, there's two years to do this. This is about the environmental concern about polystyrene. And commerce and revenue and money does not take precedent over that. And I, this is also something I feel really strongly about. This is a small change we can do to eliminate styrofoam or environment. And I really think what we have here is very reasonable. Counselor Marcello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I agree with what's being said. I would be remiss if I did not mention, though, that. I do not know if Salem Hospital needs an exemption. I do know that we had not reached out to them until yesterday, and they are checking to see what their usage is. But since we did not know, and since they had not been a part of the discussion, I don't want to put an institution like Salem Hospital behind the eight ball. Without some sort of wiggle room there, um, that, they, I don't have to explain why, why that isn't, is important. But I, I do not know whether they need an exemption, and so I don't, I, I want to make it clear to anyone who's listening to this. That I am not pointing my finger at them as needing the exemption or wanting the exemption. We still need to wait for the information on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Riccardi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I also agree, and I, I honestly don't feel super hard either way about this. Because I think what we're talking about right now is the twelve-month Board of Health discussion, but for clarity on that, I think it would be helpful if we could go through what those revisions are, because yes, we had what was. Sent out by Council President Marcello, and then we did make a few more edits and tweaks during this meeting tonight. So instead of just making one blanket motion, I think it might be helpful to go through piece by piece, and then we could, you know, do. Um, a vote at the end or something, but I, just for clarity, like I, we've, we've had a, you know, another good hour discussion on this tonight with additional edits after what was presented at the very beginning. So I think it would be helpful, um, just for our, like, all of our sanities. Um, and then I also do think it would be helpful to have that conversation with the hospital. I don't, you know, hopefully, I, I'm remiss if it hasn't happened yet, and I'm surprised because they do have a large cafeteria there. So I would have assumed that that had happened, but, you know, hopefully this, you know, will take two, um. Two votes at council, so hopefully that conversation can happen soon.
I agree, uh, Counselor Riccardi. So, um, Beth, if, if you don't mind. Could you take us through all the changes so that nobody has any questions and everybody has clarity to exactly. Uh, what changes were made and what we're gonna be voting on for a final approval?
So the first, um, section is section, uh, five ten. So what we did was we combined purpose finding and scope. And then the last paragraph, we added now therefore, and we clarified that it was just the foam, polyesterine, uh, food and packaging. And, um, we took out the rigid plastics in that section. Further down, under the definitions, we took out rigid plastics. See the strike through here, rigid plastics. Uh, we added, um, the word styrofoam and, um, five, I had to renumber the, the sections, um. So we added the, uh, imprint styrofoam, styrofoam there and styrofoam here. And we made sure that it was just, um, disposable food and, oops. Food and beverage containers, so that that was clarified. Um, further down, we made sure that it was the Board of Health that was imposing the penalties, and there's, there's, um. A paragraph here with respect to the Board of Health having exemptions and still haven't voted on whether that's, um, at any one time or just one year. And then, um, again, the health agent being enforcing, um, agent, and then, um, this clarification on that this is a six, effective year after the adoption.
My question to you, Beth, would be. That if we pass this. And we keep in the, keeping the no more than one year exemption, as was almost passed. Um, and something comes up later, unanticipated, down the road from the hospital. And, you know, the hospital is a business like all other businesses, and I don't, I, I, I know that we all hold it in, in a certain rever- reverence because. Because of, you know, what they do for the community and, 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 uh, and other reasons, but, um, the, the bottom line is, um, they're running a business. And, um, I, I think that they should be held accountable the same way. But, you know, that being said, if they come up with, you know, some kind of, something from left field, Beth, that we did not anticipate, is that something that can be? Taken up later, or can they ask for some kind of an absolute shot? How would that work?
Yes, you could bring in an amendment to this ordinance. It's not a zoning ordinance, so, um. You could bring that in at any time. You could bring it in next month.
So, um, if we took out, um, that at any one time section. Then basically what it does is it reverts back to the motion that Counselor Cohen had made and, uh, Counsel Verella had seconded. And I believe, and Counsel Riccardi, if I can ask you, have, is, have you been given enough clarity to the changes on this? Satisfac- satisfy you?
Yes, I just wanted to make one comment that I think we need to add back the definition of health agent.
Health agent is in the ordinance already, um, I believe.
Okay.
Let me just double check.
I knew that that was mentioned at the beginning, and I, I wasn't sure why, if it was something that was taken out or needed to be seconded. Okay.
Yeah, if health agent is already in the ordinance, which I believe is, should be anyway. I'll, I'll check that while you're talking.
And then, um, just a comment on that, I'd, like I said, I'm kind of agnostic on that. I would be okay with also removing the, at any one time, and if we need to go back and work through this again. So be it. That's why we're here, right?
Counselor, Counsel Verella.
Thank you, Chair Prozinski. If there's no other discussion, I would like to make.
I think we can go back to the motion on the floor that Counselor Cohen, um, suggested, uh, that he accept the language. Um. As it was up to now with no arbitrary exemptions, um, added in, which was the motion earlier. And you, you seconded it, so what we are going to vote on is, is just that, that, um. That we accept the language as it's written. And provide, provide, um, the city council, um. Our findings and ask for first passage, I believe, but I'll need a motion to do that separate. So getting back to the motion that, uh, Counsel Cohen, Cohen did, again, it's, uh, to accept the language as is, and, um. I'll take a roll, I'll take a roll call vote on that. Counselor Riccardi.
Oh, is this a roll call?
That's a roll call vote. Roll call vote after clarifying it and, and, and getting all the language, um, spelled out a little bit more pleasantly.
Sure, are we removing the at any one time?
That was my question. Okay.
Yes.
We're removing that, okay.
Yes, because, because our city solicitor told us that they can do that.
Okay, I was just checking because it was, it was still on the screen. Okay, cool, yeah, um, my vote is yes.
We're not handcuffed, okay. Counsel Riccardi, yes. Counsel Cohen?
Uh, let me see, yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Very good. So, um, I would also entertain a motion by someone that we pass this on to, um. The city council for first passage. Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Prozinski. I would like to, uh, make a motion that the ordinance related to sustainable food, wear, and packaging. Uh, be. Sorry, uh, be, uh, referred to the council, uh, for a positive recommendation.
I think it will be referred to first passage. I don't.
For first pa- for first passage, thank you.
As amended?
As amended. Thank you.
Right, the second. Is that Counselor Cohen?
Oh, I, I withdrew my hand. I'm ready to vote. I'm more than ready to vote.
Yeah, second.
Second, and we'll take a roll call vote on that. Counselor Riccardi?
Yeah.
Counsel Cohen?
Yep.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
And myself a yes. So. Thank you all for, um, putting in an awful, awful lot of work into this. I see this as the beginning, the baseline of something that we can build on later, that we can show, um, to our constituents in the city of Salem. Um, that we're, we're thoughtful of our, of our future, and once again, as Counsel Cohen said, when we, when we pass the. Plastic bags passage, everybody seems to have followed, and I think this may also, uh, pave a way, which will, once again, show that Salem is in a leadership role when it comes to, uh. When it comes to the environment, so, uh, my hat's off, and thank you all. Uh, we, we've spent a lot of time and hammering this out, and, and Beth, you've done a yeoman's amount of work in putting the language together. So, uh, uh, thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything to say? Counselor Cohen?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Prozinski. I wanted to also thank, um, the city solicitor Beth Renard and Council President Marcello, who stepped in, I think, did some great work, teamwork. And, um. I do want to say that I mentioned it before, you cannot include food styrofoam, food packaging. But this is the first time in probably six years that we've been able to bring styrofoam, uh, to be collected and recycled. And that is on June eleventh, so anyone who's listening, I think it's at the Community Life Center, and, uh. I know my wife has so much that cannot fit in my car, so I hope everyone matches me, and, uh, see you on the eleventh. So I move to adjourn.
Thank you. A second on the adjournment?
Second.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Well, we'll see you tomorrow night, and hopefully, uh, after first passage goes, we get a quick second passage. Thank you all very, very much.
Thanks, thank you all.
Thank you.